Welcome to our first budget meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Hutter-Fryer, Judy Fouchet, John Green, Scott Latham, Brian Tobin.
Here.
In the event of an emergency, conservatives advise that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles.
I'm going to turn this meeting over to Dr. Moore, who's probably going to turn over to Mr. Scheid, but before we do that, I'd like to say a few words about my friend Judy Fouchet, who because of situation is resigning her seat on the school board effective tonight, which breaks my heart, should break everybody's heart in this district. So Judy, I won't talk long as I don't like to do that.
Oh geez.
I don't think there's anybody that has done more care for or I don't even know enough words for the people, the students of this district, the employees of this district, and the community members of Southhold. You've gone above and beyond, you've made really, really good stuff happen. I promise for as long as I remain, I'll make sure that that all stays intact and it doesn't get undone. I know how hard you've worked on so, so, so many things. I can't even name them all. You should do your resume and then I could read it next month's meeting. So I'll read this. Presented to Judy Fouchet, Board Vice President, in grateful appreciation for your years of outstanding service and devotion to our students and community from 2004 to 2023. I might add that Judy's dad, Swede, who of course I was very, very fond of as well, was also on the Board of Education at Southhold School District.
He was. Thank you.
And I have something back here for you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for me the colors of power.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's the thing. So, you know, I'll always bleed red, but Greenport's colors are purple. So I finally decided to go with my inner self.
We're not going to talk about that at future days.
Just let me say thank you very much, and I will tell you now, I mean, nothing that happens with this board happens with one person. This has been such a great board to work with. You guys, Paul, you and I have been on together for a long time, the rest of you a pretty long time, and even prior to that, you know, I mean, I've been fortunate to work with a great board and great administration, especially, you know, forgot the last 20 years. So, and I know it's all going to continue to be good because I think we-
You'll be watching us.
We'll be watching. Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I mean, it's my school still. So, but not only that, I think that, you know, our leadership and our administrative leadership and, you know, the staff and everybody, you know, Southhold's a really, we've said this, it's a really, really wonderful place to work. It's a really wonderful place to be a student, and it's a really wonderful place to be a parent. So, you know, there's, it doesn't get any better than that. So I know I leave it in good hands sadly, but it's got to be done, so.
Much appreciation, Judy.
All right, this is, I'll go back over there someplace. Thanks, Tony.
Okay. So this is just a present-
I get to comment on one more budget.
Well, this is, this is a budget forum. There's, it's just a presentation. There's no question, really questions, answers. It's just our first presentation. We still have several, several more to go, so I'll turn it over to you. We have no other, no other action actually at all.
No. And there's a timeline in here that you'll see later during the presentation that gives you a good idea on what the actual timeline for the budget is. So Chuck is going to present our budget in just a couple of minutes. I guess, you know, the, really the high points are, you know, the astronomical budget increases that you read about in the paper did not affect Southhold very much at all. Ours was a grand total of $27,000 increase in aid from the 3.1 million, 3.1?
Oh, the revenue increase.
Yeah. So Chuck will go through all those numbers for you. Ours is coming in a little bit below our cap, you know, which is, which is always nice. So it will be a typical budget for us, even with some of the increases that are completely outside of our control, like the inflation increases, the healthcare increases and things like that. So I'm going to hand it over to Chuck now, and he's going to go through all the technical pieces of the budget that I'm sure all of you are fascinated to learn about. Are we, we're presenting, we're going up here, right?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. It's my pleasure to present the budget for the 2023-24 year. As mentioned, what I'm going to try to accomplish tonight is just kind of go through, mainly going to focus on revenues. We're going to go into fund balance a little bit and kind of hit some key points. Going in the future, we'll talk more in detail about the expenditure side of the budget. So just some highlights we go through. So right now, the proposed budget, we're under the tax levy cap, right? So the levy cap that deals with the taxes, our cap is 3.06% for the tax levy cap. So we're, we're under, and I'll go through some of the details with the numbers. This budget is a roll forward, so it's the same program staffing is, remains intact. Right now, the budget to budget increase is the 2.99%. And again, Dr. Moore and I have met with the administrators, went back and forth for the last few months working on it. The community has always been very supportive of our budget, and we want to continue that way, so we're trying to be as diligent and, you know, we want the programs and the students to get the best education, but at a reasonable price. So a couple of things, for the health insurance, it's always a big item, only because it's roughly over $4.5 million lying just in the budget itself. So anytime any fluctuations with the rate, it's important to see what that rate is. And we have the rate of 8.75% for next year. Another area is the teacher's retirement system. Again, sometimes it's just a large dollar amount, so when the rate changes, it's a, it's a big hit on the budget. But this year, we're seeing with the teachers' retirement, for next year, it is anticipated to go down a little bit. Overall, it's still going to go up because salaries go up, but again, it's just a key factor to look at. In this budget, we do have, we're going to get more detailed, we have projects for transfers to capital. That basically means we do some projects, really instead of going out to borrow, so the last couple of years we've done that, we want to maintain that, and like I said, going forward, we'll go into a little more detail with the capital.
Can I just also add, where it says programs and staffing remain intact, that does not mean that we will have exactly the same thing this year as we have last year. There are times where we do more of one thing and less of another in given years. It just means that we, we are not cutting programs, you know, at this time. We may run more clubs based on interest, we may do more different things, but that bullet does not mean that everything this year will be identical to last year. There are times where we phase out programs and phase in other programs in their place, you know, so that-
Funding is the same.
Yes, the funding amount-
Has not changed.
Has not changed because there is no purposeful cut of programs. That what, that's what that bullet about, you know, there's no purposeful cut of positions or programs. You know, if half of our population leaves, we'll be cutting positions.
Right.
You know what I mean? But there'll be no purposeful, it's not, you know, done that way. That's what that bullet means. It's important to understand that that does not mean that everything will be identical next year as this year.
Can I ask a question about the TRS? The TRS is decreasing, however, that's based on stock market from two years ago?
Exactly, yes, because there's a lag, exactly.
And that lag is a few years, so we know what the stock market's done in the last year. Is there a way to predict and put more in that reserve so that when it goes from 10 to 18, which has happened in the past, we-
Well, right, you never know what, where it's going to go in the future, but we are building the TRS reserve, right? It's fairly new, three years old.
Right, only a few years, yeah.
So it only allows us to put a certain amount in each year.
It's a percent?
It's a percent of the salaries that you're allowed to put into the reserve.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're getting into the detail, but we're going to, we use that reserve already. We offset as a revenue source, which means we don't collect taxes for it each year, because that's what the reserves are for, which again, I'll go into detail, is that good years, you put money in those pots for that specific purpose. When you have any kind of fluctuation, it's there for it.
Because we can anticipate in the next two years that this is going to go to 12, 14, 16.
And then we'll fund that, we'll continue to fund that reserve annually.
Are we trying, are we going to get to a point where it gets funded to the max that we're allowed to fund it?
To get, come back to a point where-
Are we, are we funding it currently at the max that we're allowed to?
Very close to it. Maybe not exactly.
And the plan is to continue that?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
With the budgets, it's always a good point, again, that's where we're going to focus on reserves, fund balance, because budgets, even though we do look long-term, and it's also obviously a short-term mechanism, but we want to see where we stand with numbers because that also gauges how we're going to budget going forward. So we have undersigned fund balance, the last year the audit was done for June 2022, we had a million 282 in that. That's the, the cap that we're allowed to keep in it based on the budget. That's really the, you know, the rainy day fund, that's the amount to me, any, before you fund any reserves, you want to fund the undersigned fund balance. So that helps cash flows, that helps with our low 10 borrowing amount. So you can see that pretty much is going to stay the same hopefully from years forward. It's again, that's kind of, once it's set, we want to keep it that way. I think it's just good, good prudent budget management. Appropriative fund balance, a little difficult term to explain and understand, but that's how much we put in there. We have that amount, the 300,000 in the revenue budget, where we offset, we use fund balance because we have it, now we want to use it. It's going to fluctuate between 300 and 350. You'll see in the, we, next year, we're using 350,000, but that's what is it roughly, 1% of the budget? That's really what you want to be, because I know there's the state, the comptroller comes, looks at, schools looks at that amount, they don't want to see an exorbitant amount of fund balance that you give back, because that basically means you have money in your expense budget that potentially you probably know you're not going to spend. So that's again, a good number to be, and it's, you'll see, hopefully we're trying to be consistent. And as I mentioned before, having reserves, fund balance, helps with the Moody's rating, the AA2, helps with the low borrowing rate and so forth. So again, that's what we want to maintain. We have very little debt. It's worth mentioning again, that the last payment now is June 2031. So again, potentially we might want to look and see, you know, what's going to happen next, sort of planning. But like I said, the one bond that we have, it was a 13-year bond, to me, very light for a school district. And like I said, we were looking more at capital reserve to fund projects, basically to help taxpayers, so they don't have to pay for something 20, 25 years down the road. You know, we, the buildings are built, so again, I think it's just prudent financial decision-making to do that. Just a chart, nothing, the details, but budget to budget history, really with the inception of the tax cap, that budgets have really been kept in check, as you can see. The bottom is the projected for next year, 23, 24 is just under the 3%. Typically, we've seen 2%, 2 and 1/2%, again, depending on what the, the revenue side, but we have to be careful, there's a lot of different factors that go into the budget, of course, but I just want to give you again, an idea of just the history of what the budget to budget has been. Reserves, it's important to know where we stand financially. We're in very good financial shape. You see that we're comparing 2021 balance with 2022, and you can see we increased a little over a million dollars last year. I just want to point out the top two reserves, capital and repair, those are typically not something that you would support the budget for, the general fund budget for. Those are separate, right, voter-approved items. Like a few years ago, we used $2 million of the capital reserve to fund some improvements. So you can see that, that capital reserve can, you know, one year it can be zero, 1 million, you know, one year it could be $7 million. But that's typically, again, it's just prudent when we have some savings in one year to put it away and then to, to use it in the future. And again, it's all about watching, you know, the taxpayer effect on what could happen if we had to borrow, again, or use the capital reserve.
Quick question, please. Just remind me, the employee benefit approved, that's when somebody retires and we're doing, right? That's what that reserve is for?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so that helps if, if there's any sort of retirement benefit or whatever, correct?
Right, exactly.
How much if we, I mean, we don't need to put more in that, I don't, do we have a lot of retirees this coming year?
As of right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, retirees from this year would be paid for the last year's.
Right.
Right.
So we don't know that we have coming up?
It's rather the unanticipated.
Okay. If you ended up with, say, more people that decided that they were going to retire, can you, after the budget is done, move money to fund that from this reserve, or are you, can you only-
The employee benefit reserve?
Yeah, or can you only do it-
You could, if it's, right, it's unknown, unforeseen. Like right now, I think I have just one person in next year's budget, but if more do leave, yes, you can, you can modify the budget and use that reserve, and, and that's what it's there for. So yes, we do everything we can to use that reserve for that.
You could also adjust it annually. If you had a large, like if we had a large influx this year, we could add into next year's budget.
Right.
The one we build next year, so really for the following year.
Right, right, right.
More out of that reserve to offset whatever you utilize, because now you're not putting back into your other reserves as much as you may want to, and then, you know, so there's ways to offset it down the road, you know, based on a lot of people going.
I know that I'm a little redundant when it comes to the workers' comp one year after year. I'm just curious as to how often it's utilized, and does it really, do we really need to budget $94,000 for it in this budget?
That's actually the revenue source. We're taking-
Oh, we're taking it.
94 out of it, and we're putting, putting that in the budget.
Yeah.
Like we're putting it into revenue.
Those are the monies that we're using.
Oh, we're using, okay, we're not going, oh, because we do that at the end of the year.
Yes.
Right, when we do it, that's when I question at the end of funding, so, sorry.
On the right-hand side.
I've got my year mixed up.
Yeah, those are all numbers that we're taking-
So I'm going to ask you that question in June.
And putting it towards next year's budget rather than in the accident for them.
It's in June.
You know, that actually lowers the budget by half a million.
Right, 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 right.
That lowers what we need to get by half a million dollars. You know, that's what those numbers are for, because again, that's what you're, you know, in some years, a reserve might take a really big hit, like, like Chuck said, you know, you might-
Boiler.
Yeah.
Is that going to be, I assume that'll be capital?
It's going to be capital.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, but we can't, we can't spend capital without voter approval.
No, but you would put it like when, you know, when it gets to the point where, and we, you know, of course-
That's in, that's in the next year, correct?
Next, next couple of years I'd like to do it. You know, like we, we're funded well for it, we're in good spots, and what we do is we just put that vote on. We have four boilers, to replace all four would be in excess of $4 million. We probably would look to replace two, because they do work well now, the hardest part is parts. The boiler guys have told us, replace two and keep parts from the other two for the two you have, and, and, you know, have two brand-new boilers and go forward for now and replace two more down the road.
Of course, they're just going to continue to go up. It's too late in the year to do something with this vote, and may I'm assuming?
It's quite honestly less about the monies and the vote, and more about the fact that with all of the grant money that's been out there, it's hard to even get people to do these things right now and get the materials, and it's been very difficult. Like we waited a year for the air conditioning unit to be finished, you know, the ventilation and air conditioning unit on the top of the auditorium to be finished. So it's, it's, it's a combination. I think it probably is too late as far as hearing-wise, you know, we have to technically analyze, but we can chat if you like.
I think, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Because if it's, if it's a year, which, you know, we're-
We have to do now for next year.
Kicking it to get it running again isn't going to work much longer.
I can tell you, it's eight months out just to get it done.
Right, but that's the point. That's proven now.
Right now, we're really planning for next year.
Right, but that's why we don't want to do a special vote for it. You want to really tie it in with your budget, I think, because it just costs money to, to run a vote, and if it's-
We can find out about that.
I mean, that would be my recommendation. Find out a timeline, and I don't know if, if there's time for-
We're within our timelines for posting it and everything. I mean, it's a good-
We're going to have a boiler in November.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we should start.
Yeah. Like we're, I mean, our problem last week wasn't us, it was, it actually ended up being National Grid.
Right.
It was their switch, our boilers were completely fine. You know, the reason it went off with natural gas was because they had a relay switch that was bad outside, and ours worked fine off the boiler. So all four of our boilers are working fine right now.
Right.
But yeah, we'll look and see, it's a good idea. We'll look and see what the timeline on it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a chart with the history, the tax-based growth factor is just another component of how we set what we're allowed to, to go out for a tax levy. This is kind of like the brick and mortar changes we get from the state, each county, each town's different, but next year, they, they're giving us the highest we've had probably since 12, 13, is the 1.13%. So that's what we increase, again, our prior tax levy. I'll go through the, again, the formulas, but again, they really have no control over this. Usually it's about 0.5%, but again, next year, we have a nice increase, again, of So the Consumer Price Index, CPI, again, I know everybody to me and myself, sometimes you think, oh, there's a 2% tax cap, but it's really not 2%, it's, that's one part of the formula. So the way this chart, I'm just showing at the top is the 2%, we can increase the tax levy higher than 2%, so that's where the 2% tax cap comes in. You can see some years it's low, sometimes 1.5, one year is like 0.2 something. Next year, we are allowed to go to the 2% for CPI. I believe the factor they were using, the compare, again, it's the highest of the 2%. CPI was 8% the number that they had for that month, for that, for the school year.
What month is the deciding month for the budget for the CPI?
I'm sorry, say it again?
What month is the CPI figure coming from?
What month? I think it's, I think it's December.
Okay.
And it was what, what was it?
It was 8% was the factor for CPI.
We're capped at 2%.
Every goes up, you know, they have a, have a chart that go per year.
Increase can only go to 2%.
Even though CPI is 8%, that's just significant for people to understand, because, you know, in, in the year where CPI was 0.02 or whatever it was, you know, we had our feet held to the fire on that, but when it goes over the 2%, it doesn't matter. It's like that doesn't exist. So that's important.
And my wish was that had to come in the negative?
Yeah, yeah.
Things in their budget.
They had to, they had to eliminate things. So it's just, you know, I mean, it's not bad, totally bad legislation, it's, I think, reined in some things, but on the flip side, years where you're looking at an 8% CPI, it's, that's where you start to see schools cutting, cutting things.
We are seeing that on the expense side.
Right.
The supplies for, in the classroom have gone up, the-
Everything else is going up.
It's getting clear in transportation, we've seen the six, that follows the CPI number. So I projected 6% for, for transportation, which is a big, again, when you're dealing with the 2% cap on revenue, and your expenses going up 6, 7, 8%, something has to give, so.
Okay, all the phone with that.
So this is the tax levy cap calculation. From the top is the current tax levy.
You gave this to our non-grade algebra students today?
And again, probably nothing really to do with-
No. I wouldn't do that to them.
That'd be interesting.
I mean, I'll try and just, again, it's, it's just important, because there's a couple of things in here worth mentioning. We talked about the tax-based growth, the 1.13% is a very good number, so that allows us to go up the 323,000. There's a capital piece, so the tax levy basically ignores any kind of, with the bond, because that's a separate vote, it's approved already. So that number gets backed out, and it gets put back in for next year. So basically, you can see that number's being compared with the one below the 739,000. Roughly, it's the same. Our building aid happens to be going up next year, so that's why it's a little bit of a, about $25,000, $30,000 difference. But that's, like I said, it's, that's removed from the formula because it's already a separate proposition where the voters approve the, the project. I just want to spend a minute with the pilot receivable. So that's a couple, last year, that was added for the first time for the, I think it was the LIPA property. The problem, it's been very muddy, the, to get numbers of what the exact numbers will be, because usually sometimes, oh, it's a 10 years, this is the amount, it's very clear. It's, apparently it's still in court, I, I get the number from, it's, it's all verbal from the town. And so like next year, the 174,000, so that's the payment we just received for next year. So we hold that money, we apply for next year, but I, usually pilot comes in two form, two parts. They don't tell me if I'm going to get another half, it doesn't, they don't tell me it might end, it might keep going. So the difficulty is last year, when we received the 184,000, that dropped our, the amount that we had to go out for taxes. So people had a great benefit, probably didn't know about it. The worst part is when pilot drops off, the taxes that you're going to, so we need to now collect-
You've got to find that money somewhere.
The 170, we had to collect it. So now we are raised, it has to go back up. So it's not, it's, it's not very-
You have to include that in your budget, right?
Right.
When you get it?
Has to be, yeah.
We talked about this last year, and it just-
Yes, we did. Yeah. You know, we got ours so late last year that we actually have a real number that's being applied, because it was the money that was given to us last year that was being applied.
Right.
But we don't know what else will come next year, and that's where the really hard part comes.
And it could be none, and then, yeah.
Don't you wish the school could do business that way? We're not quite sure, so maybe-
Do business that way.
Kind of, right?
Pilots are payments in lieu of taxes. So for instance, a large corporation might move here, and there'll be an agreement with the town or the state that you don't pay regular taxes, but you still have to pay certain pilots, which give us revenues from it. The problem is that they change very frequently, they're very litigious, there's court decisions that decide, sometimes you wait three years for the decision and then get paid. Now, we're required to include this in our formula, and it's, I mean, Chuck is, you know, good at guessing closely, but the fact is-
A good guesser.
He's a guesser, you know. He called numerous times, because I asked him about numerous times through the process, and he said, I got off the phone with them, and they told me, they can't tell me whether we're going to be getting them paid, and if so, how much?
And again, unfortunately, the past, sometimes if it's 20,000, it's no big, you know, deal, but when you're talking 180,000, it's, like last year, our tax levy cap, I believe, was like 1.6, we went out for a tax levy increase of 1.71. The real number would have been 2.2% that we were allowed to, and that we, we need to raise. So it was a significant drop. So it's only going to happen, again, the opposite way if and when that does fall off. But like I said, the bigger problem is there's just lack of any kind of support for those numbers.
You can't plan for it either.
Can't really plan, because, and it's, would be nice, anything, right? We always talk about budgets, and we want to keep the levy-
Right, consistent.
That's, it goes against that whole concept, so it's, you know, we don't want spikes in the tax levy, because people might say, oh, it's going to go to 3, 4, and it's because the pilot, sometimes you have no control over. And like I said, it's something we had to put in, and we'll continue to, to watch it, but it's just something that's, that we have to deal with. Again, the CPI, the number that really is the 2% is in the middle of the chart, that is the allowable increase. So the max change in the tax levy for next year that we can go out to without extra, with voter approval, is the 3.06%. Our budget to budget, through some cuts and, and going back and forth, we're going underneath the cap, so right now, our, the tax levy proposal is 2.94% increase.[1669.96] the cap, so right now, our tax levy proposal is 2.94% increase. Like I said, we had to lower, we lowered, you know, went back, sharpened our pencils, lowered the expenses, to be able to try and keep that number as low as possible. And so, again, the increase is estimated to be, right now, 840,000. In the future meetings, we'll go into more detail with different averages, different assessments, but just a quick thing, right now, based on our estimated with this increase, taxes on an average house assessed at $7,000 would be $191 a year. And you could figure out whatever, based on your properties, it's 95.436 for every hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The valuation is based on the number that we have currently, which is as of December 22, so, you know, valuation changes year to year, but again, I only use the current number that I have, so things, your tax billings could be slightly different, and are slightly different, again, depend on that new, whatever that change is for valuation. So, state aid, as was mentioned, but just to go, it's just, right, and it'd be sort of with Newsday and the article, this huge increase in state aid, over 10%. Unfortunately, with Southold, we didn't get the big increase, we got the minimum increase for foundation aid. So, that's the real number where our foundation aid is going, projected to go up 3%, the minimum, or 40,000. The tricky part in state aid is a lot of expense-driven items in there, such as BOSIs, excess cost aid, that it's triggered really by your expenses, which haven't been finalized yet. So, based on those numbers and building aid, I do see some other aids dropping, so, right now, I have the total state aid increase at the 1.4% or 27,209. So, like I said, that includes the foundation increase. Again, I don't know if you know, the forms, there's these rolls that come up with the total, we had a negative amount, but again, that was based on projected expenses, so those aren't, to me, real numbers, where I know how much, or I plan to spend for BOSIs, for example, is always the good one to choose, but they have, like, our BOSIs going down, but our BOSIs is not going down, because we have been consistently spending money and spending more at BOSIs.
So, the total state aid increase is a net of foundation aid...
Right.
Plus what you anticipate, other aid is gonna go down, so...
Plus what mine is.
Yeah, so, it's gonna go, other aid's gonna go down based on expenses, so, really, we're looking overall at 27,000.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
And that's not in stone until the governor's budget passes, which is April 1st, so, it could go up.
It could, it could.
Could go down, and we've had years like that as well.
I don't know where they're getting the money from, but, right.
Can I ask a question? Are our surrounding districts equivalent to the percentage that increase that we're getting? Last year, they were both much higher.
Again, yeah.
I mean, I think the district to our west was roughly the same, and the district to our east was, they got a big increase.
Yeah.
One year, we got a big increase and they didn't, which made no sense.
There's no rhyme or reason, like, I met with the superintendents of both of those districts, and we compared our grant allowances based on the COVID grants. Ours was significantly higher than theirs for no apparent reason. We asked the state, we asked everything. This year, one of theirs is an 800-something thousand dollar increase in their state aid, and the other is, you know, 50, 60, it's a little more than ours, we're the lowest of the three, but it's not an astronomical one, no rhyme or reason. If anybody here, like, even that formula that Chuck just showed you for the, that's an easy one compared to figuring out how you get state aid.
Oh, they don't even know it.
They won't tell us all the components.
I've talked to legislators, they don't know it.
They'll tell us some of the components, but they won't tell us all fully.
Because they don't know.
They really don't know.
So...
Been enough of those meetings that they really don't know.
One of our neighboring districts had over an 800,000 dollar increase, right? Yeah, 800-something thousand.
But then again, that's also a rough position to be in.
And then, when they, when they decide, no, we're not gonna have that, right when they pull that, when they pull it.
Like, all that said is completely true, until the governor finalizes a budget, none of our aid is actually set. There are times when the governor's budget goes up, there's times it goes down. The good part for us is, we don't have a tremendous amount to go up or down.
We've never depended on it, because the amount's always been so similar.
They don't give us a tremendous amount of aid, so, you know, a 3% increase, like they gave us, it's not a huge, you know, it doesn't account to one position in the list, a 3% cut would be neither, so that is beneficial to us when it comes to our planning purposes.
I know the term the governor used was to fully fund, foundation aid was a big chunk, was a formula where districts received tons, we, our share was zero, we had no change to fully fund, because years ago, they dropped it, they cut foundation aid. So, now they wanna fully restore it, and basically, as Dr. Morrow said, with all these formulas, our share of that money was zero. So, it's, in a way, I'm happy with, you know, the 30,000, it's, you know, like I said, I had imagined it would go down, this couple of years with the, with the money and the pandemic, so, but still, overall, compared to the, it's not very pleasing, not good news compared to other districts, the state aid part. But again, just to repeat, again, Dr. Morrow, the fact that when it does drop, we are less affected, so I guess that is a good thing to repeat. Just, we just mentioned, which came up last year, but just, we're coming to the end on one of these two funding sources, streams are very important, because it's a lot of money that we receive to, what's the term, to get the kids back up to speed, so to speak, from being out of school and the pandemic. So, we're going through, spending that money as best we can, as, you know, for the best purpose that we can come up with.
The allowable expenses.
Allowable, yeah.
You know, like, we don't get to just decide, they give us a list of things you can use up, you know, and then, you know, we're trying to spend, fully spend all of the allowable expenses.
So, I just have two slides on revenues, line by line, I'm not gonna go necessarily line by line, because a lot of it was already mentioned, but just a couple of line items, right, I mentioned with the tax levy, the biggest part of our, the budget to fund it is, of course, the tax levy. So, you can see, that's going up 840,000 or 2.94%. Again, pilot's separate, we talked about, we talked about state aid, shared personnel's going down, shared sports is going up a little bit, so these are just based on where our current revenue is this year, what last year looked like, where we just estimate, we try to be conservative with revenues, meaning we, you know, we don't wanna budget 100,000 for a line item and receive 75,000. So, we try and budget on the, you know, on the low end, where this way, we, you know, it'll be close, of course, but again, we wanna budget on the low side of it. You know, federal fund for the ROTC program, again, it seems like it's increasing, now we're getting back into full, you know, trips and stuff like that, so I anticipate an increase in federal aid, some of the tuition money, again, have some increases for the number of students coming over. As mentioned before, use of reserves, important, again, if we just, we have reserves, we're in very good shape, we're gonna use these reserves to help lower the tax levy, keep it, you know, the budget to budget and the tax increase as stable as possible. Miscellaneous, mostly it was with the interest that there is, what is nice with the interest rates going up, and there is, has been an increase in interest, of course, so that was a big chunk of that increase. So, again, right now, budget to budget, you can see at the bottom's the 2.99% that we projected. Like I said, I think we worked hard to try and keep it under 3, and again, we're just trying to be aware, and, you know, again, the best programs at the, at the low cost. Definitely, I think, like I said, because we follow the rules as set for each reserves, this is guidelines from the state comptroller or state education department, so like I said, we make sure we follow all the rules and regulations with each reserve, because they dictate, you know, when you could put, how much you could put money in, how much it is, what to be used for, so like I said, there's a lot of guidance on that, I'm not gonna go through, you know, read anything, but again, that's just helpful to know that it's, that it's there. Just a couple with the upcoming dates, next week, we'll get into the, more of the expense side of the budget, and the admin presentations, we'll go through their, their side of the budget. April 5th, we'll go, again, more of a summary, update expenses. Because of the dates, we're recommending that the board adopt that budget on the 5th, normally it would be at the full April meeting, I think in mid-April, but the April meeting is a day or two late compared to when you have to, there's guidance we receive on when you have to get it done by, based on a lot of other factors, so we miss it by day. So, we're gonna try and do it, you know, we are gonna do it, you know, about 10 days early, like I said, to meet that. May 30 in public meeting, but the public hearing, and the vote is May 16 for all school districts across the island.
So, the administrators will be here next week?
Next week, correct.
And clearly, we're not looking to pierce the cap, I think we should add that.
Right, not piercing the cap, in fact, we're about $35,000 underneath the cap.
We should repeat that accordingly in the next few months.
I think the most impactful slide is that, the one with the CPI, because it shows you get up to 2% and you know it's going up to 8%, because everybody's bought gasoline, food, eggs, fuel oil, but it goes up.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you. How is it?
We'll hear from the administrators next week, which will give us more of a breakdown on...
Their expenses.
Their expenses. And then we can bring our questions. Thank you.